Good evening all, it's six oh one P M. This is the business meeting of the Goodfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me beside you in the lodge of leaders.
I do have to do this. In our state or American, the Republican for which we stand, one nation. Need to be involved with the Ian Castle for all.
Thank you very much. And with myself, Chair Biggert Five, Vice Chair Robert Love, time supervisor Michael Alber, County Attorney William Hileken, Commissioner, Coordinator Jessica Hosh, Engineer John Tressler, and Solicitor Ron Karasak. Announcements there is staying executive session this evening, five P M. Under five eight P M. Regarding litigation, potential litigation in the M matter and Shawnee P R D matters. Hope there's an executive session called October twenty third through three oh eight, three five P M. Regarding the same with Shawnee Valley, regarding the same with back nine and a manner. Over twenty fourth through two oh one to two thirty six P M. And our fall lease pickup is ongoing during November twenty first. First order of business, the consent agenda, which is the consideration to approve the October eighth, the U twenty five, right, that meeting missed the October twenty second, twenty five, right, that meeting missed. The November twelfth, twenty twenty five bill pack, gratifying contract agreement points, ready solutions to see and. Who holds up the right of understanding of the live foundation doing your motion on the consent.
Motion to approve.
Motion, uh, here a second.
Second.
This is our discussion.
We'll give you thirty seconds on the, on the bill pack of something I saw. Big, big house media P A holdings.
That's the.
That's all our ads. It's the same thing. Wonder what it was. When we're coming industrial development.
Uh, that is, who knows, is the tip for Shawnee.
That's the tip.
Yep.
What, how is, how is? So is that revenue we receive and then we pay out the tip?
Correct.
So we receive tax revenue and then we pay for the tip.
Right.
Okay.
Seventy seven and a half percent of the tip for the first, uh, ten years.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. It just, I didn't realize that the revenue actually came through township at all. Okay.
They pay their full amount of taxes to us and then it is given back to the industrial authority, but within applies it to the bond.
Their bonds. Gotcha. All right. That's all my questions. Anything else?
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Thank you. Of course. Anyone, emergency services, want to say anything?
I'll just say that anyone who would like to attend our sixteenth anniversary banquet this Saturday night at Shawnee. Uh, just let me know. You can certainly email us or, uh, so please get in touch with me. It'd be more than happy. He's doing, so lots of work we're giving.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have you got any? Solicitor Ron.
Yes, it's been your chance to hit up where. Since the last meeting, uh, most of my time is spent working on the Shawnee Valley. A P R D matter, uh, working and reworking the land development improvements agreement, probably in. Four drafts and I'd like to think of, uh, along with conversations I've discussed with the, uh. Shawnee Valley P R D Council and also, of course, the supervisors. Uh, and that's where most of my, uh. Focus has been, there have been a couple of odds and ends, but frankly, I can't even remember what they are right now, but that's where we've been since the last meeting.
Thanks, Ron. Engineer John.
I have three projects to report on. Um. One is the Matthew plan for the bike park. We had submitted that to D C N R, uh, our final draft for their review and comment. We did get their comments back. They were very positive. Uh, they had a couple of suggestions between corporate, I'm incorporating the final report, but, uh. All went real well with that. Uh, I too spent some time on the Shawnee P R D going back and forth with the developers agreements or helping out. Uh, boss and, uh, timing and certainly improvements. Uh, but the most work has been done with post office, the bridge contractor is making very good progress there. They put in the sick deal high bars to tie the spangletogether. Uh, they put on the one coat of shot free on the one arch yesterday. They put on the second coat today. Probably put on, they'll start with the second arch tomorrow. So that project is moving along real well. One thing that did come up, which I'll bring to your attention is, uh. It was pointed out, which we didn't see when we first printed out the bid, that there is some loose mortar, some cracking between some of the stones. Uh, that probably should be repaired to keep water from getting in. I got a price from the contractor to do that at twenty six dollars and one cent, I believe, per linio foot. We're estimating somewhere around, uh, two hundred linear foot, maybe, which would amount somewhere between four and six thousand dollars if we were to do that work. I would recommend doing it. Uh, I think it's, uh, a rather small chain door, considering the own, the overall scope of the project, probably think it would help extend the light liberation.
To use the same shot range exactly?
No, they actually going, it's a hand, it's handwork to, to do the pointing between the thumbs.
You feel, I mean, was the bid or the request for bids, was it so specific that it didn't include this?
Yes.
Really?
That's something that we can put on the next, since that's next.
Yes, that doesn't have to, that's the last thing they will do.
Okay.
Do we have an estimate of time to finish?
I've, they're looking to clean up within the next couple of weeks, but your meeting again next week, that would be plenty of time if you want to go some more consideration. And that's all with I.
Truly. Thank you, John.
Our question, I heard they submitted something for the bike park as, I was just wondering if it's that gone out for big yet, that job or is it just the preliminary planning?
They need to approve it pretty before the bidding.
All right, and who's that? You said B C N R?
B C N R, Department of Conservation Natural Resources.
Okay.
So even after it's finally approved, you would have to decide, uh, what to bid and, and when.
Oh, great. Fund it first.
Correct.
Okay. Understood. And well, what, uh, what is exactly is B C N R deciding on?
They proved us to, proved us to form and their objective criteria. They want to make sure at least criteria.
They're one of the ones who provided the funding, the grant.
Okay.
And they have specific criteria that in performing the study that you must meet. So they were checking our final draft.
Oh, okay.
Met all their criteria.
All right. All right. So then I don't know if it was like a permanent thing or something. All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Julian, I need to report.
Sure. Um, I spent the majority of October completing document, uh, document production for litigation. Um, and written requests, uh, as of October and for the month of October, the township issued fourteen permits and we received ten right to no requests.
I'm, what was that a little louder?
Sorry, for the month of October, the township issued fourteen permits and we received ten right to no requests.
Thank you for that impression, Ron.
I will do my best to talk louder about this.
Yeah, when you guys are talking to each other there, sometimes it's not loud enough over here out here.
Working on that.
Yeah.
I don't have anything, uh, on I eighty and six eleven, so if you're tired this evening, ground round advisory council, once we get done with whole business, they're gonna have a presentation for us. So that supervised comments, Robert, Michael, anything?
Um, I, I attended the, I'm a representative for the supervisors on our sewer authority. Um, and attended meeting, I just, I wanted to bring it up. Um. The sewer authority's been trying to expand the sewer along two oh nine. Um, there's a lot of complicated communications with D E P. Um, we've had a few different meetings with D E P on what that would look like. Um. While, so I guess originally proposed in the five thirty seven plan, the approval for our five thirty seven plan, when it came in, there was a note in it that's saying that there was potential issues with this stretch and certain parts of this stretch. So it does require some work done by, um, the sewer authority, municipal group sewer authority, um, to determine if it is in fact necessary. Not because this is a high, that stretch of, of the township is a high water quality, um, area. And this is a weird one, by the way, this, you guys might find this kind of crazy, but the E P rule says. Um, if you're taking water out of a high quality area. Um, they don't want you to remove it, even if it's sewage, which seems crazy to me, but this is how it's framed. They would rather you use onsite septic. Anything even sands, mounds, what do they call them? Um, yeah, which I find just crazy, but that's how it works. They want you to keep that pure water, even though it's. Gone through the toilets. Um, anyway, that is to say, um, because of that, um, they don't want a sewer to be pulling water out. Um, unless it is revealed that that is really that the sewer systems there can't hang, they can't, the system can't handle onsite septic, can't, um, or. The current onsite septic and sewer is failing. So they're gonna be start to do some work. One of the things that came out from D E P. Um, was they said in an ideal world, it would be the township's S E O, which is a fleet and over, if you know, stands for. Sures, or enforcement officer. Um, so that's actually the township side. The sewer authority is not a township. It's a separate municipal entity. Um. So I'm just sort of raising that, that in the coming months, they're gonna look to sort of schedule that and they're, they would prefer it at the S E O at either assisted or was involved. In some of that process, which includes, includes, uh, identifying thirty percent of the lots, digging holes, doing inspections on current, um. Well, sewer systems, which is allowed by the S E O, the S E O is allowed to inspect, um, sewage systems. So it's probably gonna come down the pike at some point. I mean, if anyone lives on two oh nine, um. Two oh nine, uh, Southbridge Road. Um, there is a probably like that sewage systems may be inspected, um, at some point over the next.
But Michael, they're expecting current sewer systems. They're making any allowance to the fact that, uh, there's buildings they've wanted with their developments that are on that border. They're gonna use more. In fact, we have three developments that are waiting for the sewer to come in.
Well.
Which will be.
The D E P will say if it's a development that wants to bring in the sewer, then they should be paying for it. Um, but besides that, yes, any lot that exists would have to have be tested in addition to sewer systems tested. It's a combination of both. That was a long explanation to explain that our S E O probably needs to be involved in a process. That's handover engineering of inspecting. Something like thirty percent. We don't know the numbers. I'm just sort of flagging that is in the minutes for the sewer authority that will come out the next sewer meeting. Um. So it's just to inform you. It's the best invite. All right.
Thank you. Robert, anything?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you all for the chance to continue my work. I look forward to the next six years. Okay, fine. Excellent. Whole business, we have the Shawnee Valley P R D stage one B land development agreement. Ron, I will let you be the housekeeping on that.
All right. Well, let me stay with, has been John here. I know, I believe that this Derek Hunter is, uh. Online, if I'm not mistaken.
And Mike Peters is here as well.
And, yeah, I mean, and Mr. Peters, who is the attorney here personally, so they can add, uh, with respect to this matter and also Mr. Uh. Tressler also add. So there are two documents that are here before the court, for, before the court, for the board for approval. One is the land development improvements agreement and one is the stormwater agreement. As to the land development improvement agreement, the agreement indicates that this is for stage one B. Uh, which will be completed in seven phases. The agreement deals only with phases one and two. Uh, six million dollars is being posted as performance security for those phases one and two. Another two million dollars has been posted for the secondary access. The township has been able to secure agreements from the developer, uh, which would be more than what would be required by law. So. Township should be aware that it's been able to secure those agreements, that there will be no earthmoving activities for phases three and four, stage one B. Until there has been an updated Penn dot traffic, uh, impact study and that study would have to be met. Uh, and that, uh, road that we're talking about, the, the crossover road.
Lakeview Drive.
Lake, what is it? Lakeview Drive, uh, which will need to be constructed before phases three and four can begin. Uh, the agreement also identifies the township so that in the event there is approval of these agreements and the township gets sued. The developer Shawnee has to come in and identify the township, pay their lawyer fees, pay their costs and. Pay whatever needs to be done in order to protect the township from the decision that it may made. I know that the, this first, uh. Phases one and two deal with, uh, less. Buildings that had been proposed, and I don't remember what that is, but I'll pass that over to Mr. Peters when that time comes. And then we also have the stormwater agreement that deals with lots that have stormwater detention, retention, the ponds, the various things in the agreement. Is that the owner developer will be responsible to take care of those facilities. And by that, I mean, it's a significant, uh. Uh, part, you know, it deals, uh, with, and I'm gonna give the, uh, language here. It deals with construction and installation of the facilities. It also deals with repair, maintenance. Uh, and. Uh, replacement of those facilities along with stabilization, reconstruction, et cetera. So those have to be done by the owner developer and if any of the lots are now sold to, uh, new owner, upon which the facilities are situated. Then the new owner is also responsible for, uh, those items. So that being said. I'll pass it over to, uh, Mr. Peters, what I believe based upon what I've reviewed, based upon the. Documents that are in front of us that I can comfortably recommend that they be signed. And, and I understand that some people may not want this. Development or may not want this matter to occur, but unfortunately that train left the station in nineteen eighty eight and we have to now deal with the. That would be my position. Mr. Peters is here. If he wants to say anything, and of course I can answer any, sorry to your executive means.
Uh, thank you very much. Good evening, my name is Mike Peters. I am, I'm a land use counsel for the developer. Um, Ted Hunter is also on the line. He can correct me if I'm wrong, but. Um, looks like phase one and two, thirty seven singles, seventy six pounds. So that's what you're looking at. Um. Everything Ron represented is correct. Um, I was engaged by the client, um, some time ago. This is my first time appearing before you personally, but. Um, I was engaged a few years ago when the declaratory judgment action was filed. Um, you know, the end result of that declaratory judgment action, I was then engaged again. To work through this land development improvements agreement. Um, the client. Uh, understood that the township was asking things of them above and beyond what is required by the municipal's planning code, but was willing to do that in good faith to work with the township. My job was to make sure that the agreement at the end of the day complied with Pennsylvania law, provided that again, we were going above and beyond what was required by. Uh, Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, given the age of the project, we had to work through, um, things like the traffic improvements that are going to go in, um. Pursuant to current Penn dot standards. We've worked through all of that. I hope your staff will say that we did so in good faith. Um. We now have an agreement that, um, again goes above and beyond what is required by the law. Your staff did not go easy on us in that regard, and I don't mean that as a criticism. Um, they took your concerns as a board seriously and the agreement, um, protects the township. So. We are requesting an approval this evening. We've explained before that we have a narrow window for earthmoving. Um, so i- if there is any further delay, there's significant risk for harm. And, um, that aside, more importantly. We strongly believe that what is before you is appropriate under the law, so we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Entertained, just so everyone knows, see really an entertaining motion in a second. We can have public comments and then to stifle that. I entertain a motion to, uh, approve the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Should my Mr. Albert, you like your second?
Second.
Second.
I understand that Mr. Chair, uh, it's the two agreements, the land development improvement agreements and the stormwater agreement. Yeah, okay. And also should not slate anyone, I believe attorney Givonini is here, who might be representing the preservation society. So he may want to. Comment before there's any official action.
Of anyone?
I'm gonna see the floor if anyone who wants to speak.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, counselor. Good evening, everyone. Anthony Giovinini from the Office of Brock on the veto. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Shawnee Preservation Society. Um, I realize we're at the tail end of this, but maybe we missed if I didn't advocate for my client, um, with respect to the, the. Agreements, um, to be acted upon this evening. So as this board is aware, um. By court order dated March eleventh of twenty twenty four, from the Honorable David J. Williamson of the Monterey County Court of Commerce Police. Declared that the developers Shawnee Stage One L L C, Shawnee Sun Mountain L L C and Shawnee Development L L C, care of Mr. Ted Hunter. Have the right to proceed with their development under a two thousand and nine court approved settlement agreement. With plans for stages one B and stage four, under the two thousand and five tentative amended plan approval. So I'm here before you tonight on behalf of my client to see to it that stage one B developers agreement, specifically the, um. Improvements agreement addresses the two thousand and five tentative amended plan approval for the respective court order. So as this board will later, um, on October thirty first of twenty twenty five, attorney Charles Fote on behalf of his client, Ski Shawnee Incorporated. Submitted to this board to solicitor Karasat and engineer Tressler. A very thorough memo related to concerns with the draft developers agreement, uh, for stage one B. Um, it is. Shawnee Preservation Society, that while very comprehensive that memo was, um, it, it is a snapshot. Of the entirety of what is to be addressed in the developers agreement, um, given the court, uh, court approved settlement agreements and the. Tentative amended plan approvals. Um. It is our position that any deviation from what is in those order proof documents, um, would cause. A restart with new plans, new settlement agreement, new plan approvals potentially. Um, so I'm here tonight on behalf of my client to advocate, um, that. The respective items that I cited this evening, um, are shown forth in the agreement. None of the thank you for that.
I would say, Mr. Chair, if you wish, uh, Mr. Peters is here and he may be able to speak to. Those items. I know that we, uh, talked about those items in detail when we were negotiating this matter. I don't have that portion of the cloud with me, so I'm gonna rely upon him to have and say, sure, Mr. Vote wanted this, and this is how we end. But Mr. Vote wanted this, this is how we end.
Sure. So we weren't able to, there are some things in his, um, in his memorandum that were. Off base and we have responded in writing to why those items were off base. Um, there were certain items in his agreement that Ron and, and your staff and I already worked through, and that included, for example, um, the list of nineteen eighty eight improvements. Um, we are addressing those by doing an updated Penn dot study if there are improvements that are required. Um, on the nineteen eighty eight plan, still required under current improvements, we are committed to performing those improvements. Um, I explained to, um, both Ron, I believe he agrees that even the nineteen eighty eight approval considered appropriately. That the traffic improvements would be updated as time went on. You are now faced with thirty seven years later. Um, how do you ensure compliance with current law? And that includes current Penn dot standards, which has jurisdiction. That is to do an updated traffic study. Our client has agreed to do an updated traffic study. So from our standpoint, the traffic improvements are conclusively addressed by our agreement to do, um, that updated traffic study with respect to, um. There were a few comments in there about ownership issues. We own the property. There's, there's no doubt about it. We've demonstrated, um, to your solicitor that we own the property. Um, there was a condition in the old approval requiring ownership. That's because way back then, from nineteen eighty eight, the property was not owned all by. The developer was owned by different entities. Some was under an agreement of sale. We have no property under an agreement of sale. We own it all. So that issue is. Inclusively addressed.
And let me just interrupt for a moment. That issue was that there had to be one owner for the property. We couldn't have multiple owners for the property. And it's been confirmed that there is one owner as per the deeds for this property.
Um, and, and aside from that, we, we feel comfortable that we, uh, have addressed any concerns of. Raising that memorandum. I note that we were not provided a copy of that originally. Ron appropriately gave it to us. Highly out, out of the ordinary for something to be submitted to a body considering a developer's plan for the developer not to receive it. Um. Not saying anything further about that because that's, that's perhaps a private issue, but, um. That being said, from our standpoint, there's nothing left in that memorandum that we can put us in.
Do this for me if you can, and it's not meant to put you on the spot and you, but. Just talk for a minute or two about the things that were not addressed in that memo, so it doesn't appear that we're trying to beat it.
Oh, sure. Yeah, don't be.
Stonewalling or anything.
Yeah, I also don't want to give too much. Too much credence to it, honestly, but I, I am still happy to do that. Um. Because you're asking me to. I just need to make sure. I know I brought it. Um.
Then if I you go by memory.
No, I did. No, 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 for sure. Believe me, I brought it. Um. All right, I'll go through my memorandum, which responds to Charlie's memo. Um. So the first were certain drafting issues that he raised. Um, that included with respect to the letter of credit. Um, he noted that the letter of credit expires um within a year. That's not true. The letter of credit has language in it that it automatically extends unless you're notified otherwise. That is form letter of credit language. I think your attorney will agree that's form letter of credit language. The township has the security it needs, so there is no issue with respect to um. The letter of credit. Uh, with respect to completion of the improvements, there was a representation in the memorandum that the. Timeframe for completion of improvements is including specifically um. Lake, Lakeview Drive, I believe, or Columbus Secondary Access Road um was not addressed in the agreement. That is not true. The agreement contains a sixty month period under which the improvements need to be um completed or else. You as the board would make the decision whether or not you want to draw on the letter of credit um to complete those improvements yourself. We're not going to get there. We're going to work in good faith, but um that was the issue um. That was raised. Um, the question of ownership, I already addressed. Um, there was a note regarding density of stage one B. Um, the stage one B density matches what was on the two thousand and five. Final approval. Um. There were also odd references in the memo to us not having final approval yet, and file approval was granted in December of two thousand and five. I think all of you know that. Um, so that, that specific representation. Was, was off, but we addressed it in writing and we can move past it. The nineteen eighty eight traffic proposal, um, we've already explained how we plan to. Address that specific fact by the. Um, that update traffic study will be the current Pendo standards, and we will comply with the requirements that traffic study. Your engineer will be involved. Um, in all the submissions, all the scoping, everything um with respect to that traffic study. Uh, with respect to ownership. I've already addressed that. With respect to dedication of streets, there was a note. Um, that previously it had been contemplated that the streets wouldn't be dedicated. Um. It's my understanding that it's the township's position, as it is most municipalities throughout Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that those old concerns regarding street dedication. No longer applied. By far, there are more issues caused. By failure to dedicate public streets. It's very well documented. And it's my understanding that the, the policy of this township has changed such that you have in fact an in-house road department, so. Um. That position, while maybe back in nineteen eighty eight, when I was frankly four years old, had some merit, but. Um, today it does not, and and municipalities throughout Commonwealth accept dedication of streets. I just have one where um. That almost didn't happen, and believe it or not, we were unable to get school bus service into development on private streets. So it's just not something. Um, that happens anymore. There was a comment with respect to a house called the Goldsmith House. Um, I noted in my response that while, you know, we're sitting here and there's no movement on the development. We haven't removed the Goldsmith House, but once things start moving, we will absolutely work in good faith with the township um. With respect to that Goldsmith House. And finally, um, there was a representation in the memorandum that Ski Shawnee was a quote unquote direct beneficiary. That's not a thing with respect to land developments. Um, it, it would be highly concerning if a third party. Property owner was a private beneficiary of a land development on someone else's land. So. That is not. I don't understand that representation, but I can tell you that with respect to what's currently being proposed. The right way to handle it with respect to Ski Shawnee's entrance is to allow Pendot. Who has jurisdiction to make the decision regarding what improvements go in. And so I think that's everything raised in his memo. We've addressed everything to our best ability, but more importantly, so. Have addressed it in a way that the land development improvements agreement complies with Pennsylvania law, which is what you should be. And I know your solicitor and all of you are trying to achieve, and that's what we've done.
Thanks. Any public comments on?
So I'm Martha Carbone, and I am on the board of Shawnee Preservation Society. Um, my, one question for Ron, when we were talking about the stormwater agreement, does that apply to the whole? Stage one B or just the phases one and two of one B?
Let me see, it might just apply to. The phases one and two, but when we get to. Stages or phases three and four, a new agreement, land development agreement and. Stormwater agreement, if necessary, would need to be redone. The document says an addendum must be done or addendum.
Yeah, that's for the land development in um.
See here.
For the additional improvement security. Um, the stormwater agreement is a little broader, and Ron can confirm. I know he's looking at it. But we did the stormwater agreement so it would cover, I believe, and Ron's looking at all of stage one B.
That was my understanding too, Mike.
What's that sound? Sorry.
I, that was also my understanding is the stormwater applies to all of stage one B. Can't be, it's not phased. It's all of it.
Looking at the leader paragraphs, and it says that a certain development entitled Shawnee Valley, et cetera, through the stage one B. Whereas stage one D is located on the other side of Shawnee Valley Drive. The developer desires to develop the premises, et cetera, so it would appear to apply to the entire. Development from.
Yeah, because that form is so much. Uh, more straightforward, I'll say. Um, we made it apply to a little thing issue.
Well, it took no part Pendot approval. So what you're saying doesn't require Pendot approval with, so.
Exactly right.
That's the thing that's outstanding. Exactly.
My other comment would be. Um, I get what Mr. Peters is saying about the road improvements would pertain, you know, obviously Pendot has a role for that. And regardless of Charlie Vogt's memo, I'm not going to get into details of that. There were certain road improvements that were required by the board. Um, as everyone knows, SBS has agreed to this development. With the stipulations that we follow the court affirmed settlement. So I'm just trying to ensure that. And the road improvements that will be done conform to that. Court affirmed settlement agreement, but was listed out.
So, so we, yeah, we're under the two thousand and five plan, not the settlement agreement.
Well, no, I'm just going to say to Ms. Carbone.
The settlement agreement, John said that Ted has the right to develop two thousand and five as approved. Or the changes that we negotiated. So he's going with the two thousand and five.
Correct. That's correct. Yes, yes.
And I've asked.
Stipulated at that time.
Yes, I've asked Mr. Hunter to. At least represent that he is following the two thousand and five plan, which he has. Counsel has also represented that because that was important.
So when you said represent, they said it.
They said, now we're going to see if they do it, because if they don't do it, now they have a problem.
Okay.
Because they save representations to various people.
Uh, and our, and our plans show that too. So, you know, if.
Again, and not enough of an engineer say, well, I'm looking at these plans and yeah, they're the two thousand and five plans. What do I know? Okay, but. They said that, they put their plans on it, and I think John. They probably confirmed that, so as best as I can at this point, doing my due diligence, it appears they're going to follow that plan. John, anything about the two thousand and five?
No, some of the improvements that are required have already been done by Pendot. Okay. Uh, there are other improvements which Ted has uh. Agreed to do, and there are some unknown problems because Pendot. They may. Determine that something else is required that wasn't even contemplated and not even in the air.
And, and not requiring a review of five different intersections, by the way. Which is a little look, I can't say unusual, but under the law, you can't force a developer to do an off-site improvement. If your developer is here, you can't say you've got to fix that intersection down there unless you have an impact study. Uh, municipal capital improvements plan, so by. Him agreeing to let those additional intersections be viewed, that to me, I think is a big step. To make sure that the right traffic is being studied and the right traffic will be handled.
Just to be clear, Pendot can require those things. We can't.
Yeah, Pendot can require the off-site improvement.
Pendot is all power.
Yes, yeah, you know.
Um, I was just wondering, who is going to keep an eye on everything you're saying? Okay, he's going to build per the plan. Who's going to look at the plan and say, oh, he's doing that right or he's doing it wrong?
Yeah, 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 we pay, that's a good question. We pay.
Not just.
No, no, it's not just one person. Yeah.
Got a whole firm and they got to pay escrow agreements to make sure that John's team will inspect. At random, basically.
Uh, basically, at, at random. Absolutely. They have the right to show up there.
Ted Hunter's going to be paying for John's time and overseeing the project, not the township.
Correct, correct.
And then um, as far as Hollow Road. I mean, thirty seven years ago, they said, okay, this, this, and this. Over the last thirty seven years, what has happened to Hollow Road? Driving down that road tonight, it was ridiculous. I mean, and then. Our Pendot has to improve Hollow Road regardless of its development or not. I think everybody agrees to that. I mean, it's just, you can't even drive on your right side of the yellow line without going off the road. So you're always over the yellow line a little bit, but Pendot should be told. They need to straighten out Hollow Road regardless of this development. That's.
We've indicated as much, and so have both of our legislators.
Somebody has to talk to Pendot and say. Do you really think, I look both ways from where he's talking about coming out to get the H O P right there by Sun Mountain. And either way, there is no way you can see if you're pulling out of there, turning left or right. If there's a bad, when you're coming like from the firehouse towards the ski area, there's a, a sign that goes like this and that. Twenty-five miles an hour right over that bump is the entrance that you're going to put to the development. I thought to myself, if there was a car coming out of there, huh? It'd be an accident.
So the good news is, this, this project will require that a traffic study be updated.
But Pendot is the one that.
And then Pendot will only give an H O P. Um. They're going to review the traffic study. I'm just.
I agree, but you know, if they haven't given the H O P in thirty seven years, what makes you think they're going to give a nap?
That's my one big concern is, so we start this, but we can't do the second road in.
Well, they can't really do anything if they don't get the H O P.
Absolutely correct.
But well, that, that's the whole point. I bet, we view that as our protection. If they don't get H O P, then. This was a really fun, you know.
Should buy Sun Mountain and make it another park. If it's a hundred grand, then he paid for it all.
And, and we, we do have one of the, one of the best traffic engineering firms engaged and. Um, we're confident.
Which one is it?
Uh, TBD.
Any other comments? Any other?
I'd like to know if you actually own. The uh. Township over there. We've been talking about knocking down.
Do I own? No. Do your clients own? I'm not talking about knocking down any house. We, we were asked to take it down. I tell you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear the question, Mike.
Whether or not the Goldsmith House is on our property, and I said.
The Goldsmith House is part of an eleven acre parcel, parcel that's owned by one of our LLCs, yes. That, that small, that wedge goes up, uh, where the, where the ski, a hills, maintenance road runs up. There's a piece of property that we own there. That's correct. Yes.
Sir, may I have your name, please?
Ken Morris.
M O R R I S. Thank you.
Seems a bit late to term safety hazard. It's ready to fall down. And if you have a plate blank, that issue be condemned, you pay a little bit. Regardless of whether you took your claim as approved or what, but you own it.
Uh, that process did start. Now, this happened in between that, but the, the. I think, was it building codes or something? The building codes official posted it and. Well, there's long process on that with. Their rights. I don't remember the exact date. I'll find out for you, Joey.
Isn't there some sort of ordinance about having. Elaborated, crashing down the building?
It's, it's, it's related to flying and it's related to building code, and it is, as Jacob said, it's a long process to.
That's right. I've seen it. I've driven past it many times. I understand. All in favor?
I have something to say before we vote.
Okay.
Um. As a resident of Shawnee Valley, I'm not happy with this plan. As um, a former um, member of the. Sun Mountain Recreation, it's now defunct. I'm not happy with this plan. And as a supervisor dedicated to preserving open space, I'm not happy with this plan. However. We've gone back and forth, and on the advice of council, we have. Nothing that we can do. To untie our hands from what was done in two thousand and five by other forces that. Uh. Which pushed this plan upon us, so. I will vote and I will vote to improve it, but I want you to know that. My feelings are very different from what I have to do under the law.
I, I. Actually, thanks for saying that. And I want to say something similar in that. When I first met Ted a while ago and talked about this project, I told Ted to your face that I didn't love this project. I. Said I would never approve it if it was. Done today, not least of which because it has no sidewalks. Um. And I actually. Did a fair bit of effort. I've been on a lot of these calls trying to understand some of the nuances um that have been raised here, and. One of them, I think it should be clear to highlight. Um. The. Exact, very specific, um. Improvements that were listed in two thousand and five, the way this is structured, it is not exactly the same. However. There is the language in the two thousand and five plan. That specifically, that fits the very last paragraph that says the supervisors or the township. Will amend these things if it is felt that it needs to be more than this effectively, or it needs to be better. And the answer to that from council is that is a new traffic study. In that sense. I think the township will be better off because if Pendot has greater requirements than existed before, we're going to get them. The other bit that I was very um. Trying to understand through this whole process was about specifically about Ski Shawnee's turning lanes, um, which I don't. Honestly see happening in, in this. Um, and what I've been led to understand is that that was. Quite possibly an illegal um requirement in the land development plan in nineteen eighty eight.
But they confirmed it.
Well. The, because the municipal um Authorities Act does not allow you to do that, and. You've got one of the best. State um real, realty lawyers here that felt the need to very much highlight that, and Ron has confirmed it, and. Um, Jacob confirmed as well. There's some very specific language that we would lose in court. Um, to challenge that, at least that particular point. Now, if Pendot says you have to do that, and it is required one hundred percent, they'll have to build that. Um, we can't make it. We can't make them, we can't force that to be in, in any um. Uh, land developers agreement. So I also, from everything that I've looked at, and I've been looking at this law the last. Um, month. Um, I don't see any way how I can do anything except for. Um, agree to it.
Well, thank you both for sharing all that. I mean, I think that's really says everything. You know, we always talk about Pendot as, as, you know, the enemy, people say. But in, in this situation, it's our greatest protector. I think that we have to. Go forward with that knowledge and know that this is the best agreement, because believe me, they wanted us to approve this like six different times and. Each one of those times they showed up and there was.
So these five pages longer each time.
I, I do want to say also, this is really important for those, because I don't know anyone's read this, but um. This is all seven phases. It requires an amendment after phase two. Um, to understand more of the details, but also before anything can um sort of open for H O P can be given before these roads can be used. Um, the traffic study has to be done as well. So if there's things that have to be amended, have to be adjusted by Pendot, that's all going to happen. So that's another. Level of protection. Um, I don't really know whether, I mean, my inclination to thinking is that. This traffic study is going to show so much that the developer is going to have to do. I personally don't think. He's going to get beyond phase two, but who knows? Um.
Can I ask when the traffic study might happen? Do we have an idea?
It's within sixteen, it's, you know.
Yeah, well, you have to initiate it. It's, but yeah, it's before, it'll start, I mean, it'll start.
There's a timing process in order us to get the H O P in the proper timing, Martha, that. Uh, we're going to have to get started with that study during quarter one of two thousand and twenty six, next quarter.
So we'll start to have more information as well.
That's when that's when we can start moving again. We've been we've been in a.
Hollow Road now carries about twenty five hundred cars a day. If the average speed is forty three miles an hour and it's considered a connector road. Because it connects to eighty, so it's not what it was. And everything has changed with that road.
Does does John talk to and not?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
And super what is going on with Penn Dot? You do. Somebody here.
Yes, I I had a conversation with P P D, who is the client's. Uh traffic consultant to hear from them exactly where they stand. Uh he confirmed, and I worked at this firm for many, many years.
With Enda, is there a director that?
Once they start the process back up again, yes, I I will be involved in.
We will be vigilant. At that, I'm gonna call the questions. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, new business. We have a presentation from the Environmental Advisory Council on the draft official map update. We have. James Hunnett, Mitch Boyer, and Eric White here.
Members of the board, may I be excused?
You're good. And we've got some maps, so people can look at the visuals as well. Add on. I remember. I've been one of the first things that you are. Yeah, you can have one. Well, I we'll see this one. You can point that one toward.
If if we can, can we like maybe put that here this way too a little bit so that. The audience can see what we're saying.
This is the original. That's a draft, so we should probably why don't we put them both over there?
Okay, that's fine.
Put them both side by side so the audience can see.
Anyone can inspect inspect it upon. Digital copies as well.
You can stand in front of them and point whatever, but at least that everyone can see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for seeing us this evening. My name is Derek Kines White. I'm chairperson of the E A C. Um I have James. Well, we're with us. We're. We're here for a request to update the official map. Uh this is the official map that is in place today. Uh this is the uh draft recommendations that we have. We'll just do like a a quick summary of why we're here, what happened, how it got us to this place. This summer, the Smithfield Township Environmental Advisory Council unanimously approved a letter uh recommendations to the supervisors. The E A C recommends the supervisor send a letter for the county to request technical assistance. To begin the process of updating the official map. Uh and the township. Uh the purpose of the E A C um. Is for us to advise the board of supervisors on matters relating to protection, conservation, management, promotion. Acquisition and use of natural resources to recommend plans and programs for the boards. Back in two thousand and thirteen, the official map was adopted. Uh so this is already uh in books. Um on May twentieth, twenty twenty five, the Smithfield Township E A C uh formed a subcommittee to address the possibility of updating the map. Four years old now, so it needs updating. Um the effort led to a presentation of possible updates um resulting in continued uh discussion. And on July fifteenth, twenty twenty five, unanimous support for making a formal recommendation of the board of supervisors made. Uh this recommendation was discussed on August twenty sixth at the board meeting. And the board requested that the E A C prepare a presentation. That's where we are today.
Last your question for? Just so I'm clear. There's been some zoning changes in the last twelve years. Those get updated automatically. We're talking about a a full revision.
A zoning map is a separate map than an.
Oh, then the official map?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. We'll get to that right now. Jump into that. Um so essentially. We can talk about what the official map is if that's really like, that's probably the easiest.
Give us thirty seconds. I mean, yeah.
Thirty seconds on official map. It's a land use management tool adopted by a township um as provided by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. Furtherers the execution of a concept comprehensive plan, open space and recreation plan, road improvement plans and other identified planning goals. It's a planning tool. So it really is a hypothetical map that's created so that we can use for the future. So we can say these are potential locations that we might want to um change a road. Acquire a piece of land for a park um, put it a bike path or a pedestrian path. Um community buildings, things like that. So as an E A C, we feel like this is kind of right up our alley. Uh because we have been working on uh several different projects, one of them being open spaces that could potentially be. Um acquired by township. Uh these are areas. A mountain, for for instance, that perhaps could have been identified and then maybe this. Situation would have happened, but um very quickly, the proposed updates to the official map. Are very simple. The places like um. Godfrey Ridge as a potential for um open space. Buttermilk Falls and the Twin Falls location here. Um we also have another update to the map, which is. A proposed uh bicycle and pedestrian path that kind of works its way through Smithfield Township. Um this is again a hypothetical uh map and we are just using this as the first step. To put into play a potential tenure plan, but if it's in there. We have better options to go out and get funding and more planning um to do so. The uh bike path and pedestrian path, if anybody has questions about that, very simple. Um again, if it's there, we can talk about it further in the future. Uh go ahead.
The perp- the the reason why we're pushing on this recommendation. It's it to provide a pedestrian bike uh. At a venue or place where non motorized border. Where it'll be safe, it'll enhance the community. It's forward looking, okay? This will help. Your plan for bringing in sidewalks. Because it'll be, it's already, we've already outlined the importance of where it's located. So this. Right, so the way the way the we've mapped it out, it's. To enhance the community, to bring, to bring more traffic to businesses. And to provide an area where people can uh use as recreation. And improve the business di- district because the district doesn't have. It it's a it's an eyesore. We, the plan is overall in the future to have uh hedges, trees, uh.
Except James and Mitch did a bunch of work to try and identify the best possible location for this. Um but. This is a hypothetical app. This is a hypothetical bike route, but we feel like within the presentation, there can be. Yeah, forward looking.
So does that indicate to like the, like I see in some spots, it looks like there's like two sets of.
And it and it could and it could be one or the other. Yeah, so we just, again, that was uh that's old two oh nine, new two oh nine. So those were both included on there as possible location for a bike and pedestrian path. Um yeah, as as far as this presentation, this is just an ask for us um. That we send a letter to the county requesting testament with technical assistance um by December twenty twenty five. Um and that we es- uh establish a target date of December twenty twenty six. For the conclusion of the process of this update. Um again, this doesn't cost the township any money. We already have a agreement with Monroe County Planning Commission. So there's nothing that really is gonna cost any money and take any time. You just. Send in this recommendation for the update. These updates go in. Uh the three pieces of property will be then. Identified on the official map as potential places for open space. Um and then the bike path will be an option for future plan.
Well, given the fact that it's no cops and not speaking for Michael and Robert, but I. I would think asking for the technical assistance would be great. It done that with a number of mapping things that we've done recently. Or you can put it on, you know, to to request that from them as soon as, you know, our next meeting, which is next Wednesday.
Okay, can you talk me through? I mean, I agree. Yes, of course. Happy to send a request from Monroe County to give technical support. That's what they're there for. Um. Where's where's the sort of all the red, everything done in red is proposed bike and or pedestrian, correct?
Right, so what you have is D W G connecting to McDade.
Yes.
Right, as a potential probably up there on the list of priorities.
Right.
Um and then also the main the main bike pedestrian path would kind of work its way all the way on two oh nine down into Marshall's.
Where where's it going north? Is that up one four? Oh, no, on the left side.
Uh this is just, this is just two oh nine.
No, the other way, sorry.
This way?
No, down.
That's part of the falls.
Is that four forty uh four forty seven?
Four forty seven here.
Yeah, and where's it turn?
Uh on two oh nine. From Wendy's.
It essentially connects to economic development zone.
Okay.
Cause like if you were to fill in that triangle.
And again, those are the types of things that would be discussed way later, but um.
As a, but but hold on, that is. I'm confused by this map a little bit too, because isn't, that's not Smithfield though.
That's demonstrated on the map, just so you.
Cause like that road there, that stretch of the road is in East Strasburg, that corner.
Right. It it's all actually, I mean, I assume you look at this, but a lot of this. Is in what was called the Eastern Monroe Active Transportation Plan that they did in twenty twenty. Um so I think that's where that that makes sense, because they did want to encourage funding for.
Yeah, cause I just wanna make sure so everyone knows, everything we see in color is not all Smithfield. The yellow line defines.
Little corner there.
Yeah, this this would be.
If that was in Smithfield. For me, that's like the worst intersection in the county. And we need to where the Wendy's is, but it's not in Smithfield. It's in.
Cut through Wendy's and go around it.
Yeah. I just wanna like make sure what else knows, like that's not.
Yeah.
That horrible thing there is not.
Once again, the 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 official map is used for planning purposes only, so this is a hypothetical.
Okay.
And when that gets sent in, that and the real planning would start and they.
And you need to get, I mean, I don't know the process for an official map, because I wasn't here to have a routine, but uh. Do you need to get like approval from East Strasburg to draw lines on there, or they don't care? On on the wall.
Because this would be our official map when we submit the official map to the counties. Um we could request that this be included on East Strasburg's portion of it. But when it came to our official map, it would not reflect any portion of a trail or bike path, but it cut through another.
They would cut out the Strasburg section.
Correct.
On your from that. Okay, worthwhile knowing.
Yes.
When your formal path leaves and comes back, just just say.
Yeah.
Something to think about. Okay.
So yeah, there's broad interest among both for the the biking and we do have, at at least for the most part along the. You know, Milford Road stretch, we do have a number of easements easements for sidewalks there. Yeah, so I'd like to see. I mean, this is probably all part of the technical assistance, but we can see where we do have those easements. Along that, we can see how close we are to doing a stretch like Middle Smithfield recently received Branson Sidewalk two oh nine. Yeah, last year.
Very, a very interesting fact is that when I referred, I did a map. For the, when I mapped it out originally and according to Google, this stretch here. From here to the circle, they have it mapped out as a bike path.
About two oh nine?
On two oh nine, from four forty seven to the. To the roundabout, so.
I mean, it's not dissimilar from, Julia, was the nine forty bike lanes? Was that a project that you worked on in?
Yeah, that was, that was part of the larger uh end up multi model transportation grant.
Right.
That Toby Hannah Towne had received to do some updates, not only to three eighty. And the exit ramps associated with getting on to nine forty, but adding bike lanes to the sides as well.
Yeah, and and also, again, the E A C will continue to work on updating um and, you know, bring into the board additional. Properties or potential updates for open spaces.
Tim mentioned sharing commercial interest, and I I think that's worth noting that that we have at least a few places, for instance, Marshes Creek. Or maybe River Road where um bike paths, walking paths would help as far as commercial traffic work. People could go there and not have to drive, especially on weekends. We might get substantial uh traffic in these businesses. To with these with these maps.
It'll prove the visual of the visual of the of the uh form two oh nine and it'll track. It'll attract more business or you attract more interest in establishing a business.
Also source. Sidewalks are one of the main ways to slow traffic too. It's just natural natural response. You're you're generally slow a little bit when there's a sidewalk you're driving next to.
Yeah, the the ask again is to draft the letter uh the next.
Yeah, do we need to make a motion? Okay, sorry.
Set on the next uh meetings agenda.
All right, that's it. Yeah, so send a letter to the county requesting technical assistance by the end of the year. And then we'll set a date of December twenty six, December twenty twenty six. Um for the conclusion of the process uh for the update map.
So you can actually, we're gonna approve the actual letter at the next meeting, because it is on the agenda. We could approve the.
So we're soliciting their technical assistance. I mean, I have no problem. Take that motion now.
I don't have a letter.
To have Alex do it.
Uh to draft a letter to request support from um Monroe County Planning Commission, correct?
Like your second. I could miss eleven on questions. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, with that, we are at public comments. If you wish to speak, please come up to the podium and timer will begin when you start.
Just making sure I don't break any laws here, making sure I go with the north ordinance. Uh anyhow, oh, I broke the law. Uh broke again. Um I was wondering why didn't did we skip over the uh contract with Raven Point Security?
It wasn't skipped over. It was part of the consent agenda.
Okay, what what's that about?
Security for the meetings.
What are these guys?
There's one meeting where there's a conflict.
Oh, so is it is it gonna be them or?
Someone else, Raven Point.
Right, so is it gonna be like a full time thing or?
No, it's a for one meeting, but we need to have a contract.
Oh, okay, like a sure um. Also, uh I was wondering, you know, where we're at with with any type of settlement stuff. You know, you you've said reach out. We've reached out, been perkins again. I know Ron reached back out and said that you'll you'll talk. Uh it's been weeks since then and there's no update. There's no movement. Everything is just stagnant.
We spoke today before this meeting and our solicitor will contact your counsel.
When though?
Tomorrow.
Alright, well, I mean, seems like it's just taken a while and of course you guys. You purposely made it go into the winter, so the weather's gonna screw us over too. It's all part of the plan to. Completely deplete us of everything. You guys are doing great. Um I I I don't really. See on see the point of of needing the security in here too. Uh it's just a lot of wasted money, a lot of wasted time. When you practices, you're gonna have to go up to, you know, cover these people and and. What we're paying them for Robert to finally show back up to work. I'm proud of Paul's career, Robert. The job, you finally made it back. Seats been pretty empty without you here. It's been pretty empty without you here for three or four months. But you finally got the balls to show back up to work. Feeling real good. So, then you got two securities and you got Raven Point uh here. Back up if they don't show up for you. But I hope you feel safe. Safe enough to finally show back up to her. Good job, I'm getting elected. I got sixteen seconds left, so. You guys want for three minutes, and I broke the law, I'll hold on.
I see that the uh. The next zoning hearing board meeting is uh December second here.
Yes, second and third.
I think it's the second, Sat- Tuesday?
Let me see if it's a Tuesday.
Yes.
Well, it doesn't matter to me, but it's the same time in December.
Yes, well, the water gap, wellness.
That is their appeal of the enforcement notice, okay, the. County zoning officer issued an enforcement notice saying that they were in violation of the zoning. Because they're operating a drug and alcohol rehab center and not an inn. They have appealed that notice, and that appeal goes to the zoning hearing board, that's who hears the case. So that will be the hearing on December two.
So that will be on that agenda?
Yes, yes, that will be on that. I don't know of anything else on the agenda, whether it gets all done that night, I don't know. But that will be at least what I understand to be the agenda item for that night.
I can. We don't have anything on the agenda yet.
Yes, I can.
Once Friday rolls around, I will be able to post the agenda, because we will be past the point where anyone else can be on that meeting. Due to advertising required of fees.
And of course, anybody can come, it's an open debate. All be here. Then a question for Ron. Robert, um. Since you were sharing your your views on the development, what's your view on? The wellness center with respect to the matter?
The what?
With respect to the matter of the.
Speak up, what I didn't hear.
Yes, was that the well, your opinion on the water gap wellness?
Yeah, in the building. Whether that goes through or not.
Well, my opinion is, and it's, I think it's shared by all of us, is that uh what they were proposing. Didn't fit with the use they have. Uh therefore, we're not gonna approve an auxiliary building uh to something that is not a hotel.
And and you should know that they've appealed that ruling too, so there's two appeals going on. But one dealing with the enforcement notice by the zoning officer, and then one dealing with the decision of the supervisors. Decision, the supervisors is heard by a county judge, not by the zoning officer.
Okay.
So that matter is, in fact, I just worked on it today, getting the record out. Record means all the documents that were part of this. Township decision have to go filed with the county, so that if the judge wants to look at anything, he or she can. By December.
December second.
The December.
December second, those is zoning.
We'll let you know as soon as we have a date on.
This one for the appeal, that could be months before the charging.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Did anyone know when we will be able to ride at the back nine MX again?
We don't really know.
So we've been like working on it a little bit.
Well, we definitely had a lengthy conversation tonight, um talking about. What would even have to happen? Because it's not just a agreement that would be for your property, it would affect the entire county, or sorry, the entire township. And I also, we don't, I think the final. There's two ways this can go, right? You can go the legal route, which is en route, or it can go that the township changes the law. And all documents have been sent, correct, or all uh?
All all briefs have been filed with the Commonwealth Court, so we are now waiting for the court to schedule an argument. They, if the s- if the judges want to do that, they may say. We don't need to hear argument, we're just gonna read the briefs and make a decision. I doubt, I think they will request.
I thought the court left it up to you guys to let us reopen.
No, not exactly, so the judge, what he he let us agree on is what's called an injunction, so the injunction is. Is where we have, we have just ruled that. You're not supposed to do that while it is deemed illegal to do it. So the judge is has has said that it's. The zoning officer, followed by the zoning hearing board, followed by the judge, have said you're not allowed to do this here, you're appealing that. We've just said until we have hear the appeal, you're not allowed to do it. That's the part that we have flexibility. The other flexibility we have is we could change the law to allow.
But the law is in our side, like through everything, we're a resort zone. And the resort zone is action sports and motocross is action sports.
That's not with the judge.
Thank you. Congratulations on your reelection. Anyways, if you knew anything about unions, you know that when you go to court, whether you win or lose, you're a loser either way, okay? Like, there's a simple solution to this, let's just end all the nonsense. So let's ride dirt bikes again, like that's all I want, tired of coming here, like I had a rough day at work, I don't wanna be here, dude, I'm starving. And I talked to Dennis Howard about it, I give him my opinion of you, easy solution here, man, come on. Thank you. Hey, Joe.
How you doing?
Good.
I'm happy to be here, I'm Joel Raphaelis. Warren County. I'm really impressed with this, I really like that, I just wanna say that right away, thank you for thinking about sidewalks. A big concern of mine, like I like to ride my bike and people are hit all the time, we just had a death over in Portland, just a worker. But also protect workers too. You know, I mean, having to work in places, so I. Man, my heart, thank you for serving the people. And that's really what this is about, this is what the town municipal are here for, they're here to serve the people. And overwhelmingly, the people, when they speak out and they urge the council to listen to them, the council still solicits. So I really appreciate the time. And something I often hear that's kind of being confused is legal and law. So I hear. Gentleman Michael, legal, right, but laws are different than legal. I think that's important for municipal to understand. So laws are not just passed, right? Like, oh, it's a law, can't do that, alright, even with the corporation in the United States. Has to be passed by three different legislatures, and then, right? Uh laws are very difficult to pass, alright, so what we have here are ordinances, code. And I hear that tonight, thank you for using the correct words. And you guys, very important for us to know the difference, alright, you don't make laws. Alright, and the people themselves, and they overwhelmingly don't like one of the regulations, you're supposed to listen. Because you're our servants. And I don't mean that in a disrespectful way, in fact, it's an honor, really, that you guys are here. So, um I hope you see it that way. But please listen to the people. When they're not happy, you can hear it. Pretty easy, you know? Um I actually heard a man a couple of times, an older gentleman, and he was crying, you know? There's a lot of sadness in the world, but. And we're looking, we're looking for like a beacon of light. And I feel like that's what this is all really about. There's a light, and we're all gathering to it, and it's about family, and it's about outdoors, right? Also, um Declaration of Independence actually talks about our rights. It said, that we are born with rights, so they're not getting after us, alright, that no government can take away. That is life, liberty. Excuse me, and the pursuit of happiness. We can't, you can't think that away, there. It's against uh, I get more. Alright, it's in the Declaration of Independence, what this country's founded on. And yeah, it may carry comfort, I'm comfort, but I'm sure everyone can come to an agreement, we can figure it all out. And come to that. I also wanna state real quick, I'm a living man. And so I am not under code regulations on my dialogue and the land. That's a very important stance, hey, so I hope you guys uh keep doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Hi. I was here last meeting um a couple of weeks ago. And I did specifically ask for a time that we could all speak without deleting and blocking people. Do you remember that comment? Now I have looked into it. Um it doesn't look great when you're blocking and deleting residents. Who live in this area, just because you don't like their opinions, I'm speaking directly to you, Jacob. Congratulations on your reelection, but I will say that you are our community. You are this spokesperson here, you're the chairperson, right? But I can't see anything that you do on your public page, none of the plans that you make. None of the, none of the intentions, and I looked it up. And I just wanna know, everyone to know for public record, if you have been. Had comments deleted that were not aggressive or threatening, and they were on topic. It is actually illegal, you can go to the ACL UPA and make a complaint if you have screenshots. Um and I think it's a big concern in our community for the leader to be blocking and deleting. Situations that they might not agree with, just because they don't agree with it.
If you would read the rest of what you stated, it is. It is distinct between a public officials page, which that is not, is a campaign page. You're free to do that on the township page, which is.
A campaign page is public. It is absolutely public.
Not how it works.
It is absolutely public, I've looked into it.
Okay.
And I just want everyone else here to know, if you have any proof of it, you can go to the ACL UPA page and file a complaint. Because it is important to be able to see what you're doing. You should be a public figure if you wanna be a public figure. That's all I have to say. You all know how I feel about the back nine, it should be reopened, but this goes beyond that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who else?
Hi Brett. I applaud that, that's great. I think, I think that the EAC's. The recommendations about bike parks and pedestrian, bike paths and, you know, pedestrian accesses, so it would be. I was wondering, because bikes and cars and this is. A lot of our roads are required to share the road. Bikes have a four foot, by the state law, they have, if the cars have to give a bike a four foot berth. It might be something that suggests where there's a sign that says, share the road. The people on the township roads assume if they're driving a car that they own the road. And we all, if you walk. If you drive, you walk along showing the rural road. Cars. It's an imposition. Generally, if there's a pedestrian or whatever, most people are very polite, it's not all. Um but secondly, I was wondering if we could have a re- a review of the ET zone. If, I know you guys are talking about it, I think the community would have a lot to say, we heard a gentleman, a developer. Decrying the lack of commercial oppor- commercial opportunity in the ET zone. He would like to do residential, and so I think the easy zone is problematic. Obviously, I I'm sure you're all aware of it, but if there's a regular review that we can conduct about the. If we can modify the ET zone, that would be really noble. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. The others? I don't know if you can identify yourself.
I think they were having a hard time logging in or raising the.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Um if I just may ask slash inquire. If you're willing to sit down and have this conversation of a negotiation, aren't you then? Basically admitting that motocross is an outdoor recreational activity? Because if you're working to negotiate terms to see if there can be riding, in essence, you've acknowledged that the sport. That, you know, is claimed to be not a recreational outdoor activity is just that, that's all I wanna say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, good evening, I'm Orisa Burn. Thank you, um. I just wanted to say, especially to Ron, um. That I am still hopeful, I am excited to, you know, hear from you guys tomorrow. Um it's been kind of an arduous and lengthy process to get you guys to kind of come to. The willingness to communicate about settling with us, it's been expensive, it has been. You know, I mean, our families have gotten involved, it has been uncomfortable, um. You know, Michael had mentioned and touched upon that he goes home at night, and it's stressful, the stress from the situation with my family. Is infiltrating his family, and you know, that kind of stuff is insidious. Like, this is your chosen job, like you were elected, you campaigned, congratulations, you guys chose these positions. You know, when we make decisions based on our families and our homes, again, I tell you, I wasn't lucky enough to be born here, I chose to live here. This is my chosen home, so I just wanted to share that. In this process, for us, over the past, you know, everyone says like they're tired, they don't wanna be here, yet they keep showing up. And that's a beautiful thing for me, because in this process, I have found so many people in this community. That are, you know, examples of. People who have, um you know, common family values that my family has. People who want to preserve green space, people who want to educate us, people who have come into my property and into my home. And, you know, brought a lot of um value to my family. So throughout this whole process, you know, I know it's been tough, I look forward to hearing from you guys, Ed is ready to speak to you, Ron. You know, we are, we've been put in a few calls, there, Michael, there was no phone tag, Ron can clarify that, I know that you were told that they had gone back and forth. That wasn't actually factual, they hadn't gone back and forth, we were waiting on a call back. So you know, I know this is all just logistics, but when you sit where I am and people sit up here and tell you things that I know aren't factual, but you may think are factual. It's it's a difficult thing, you know, and I am glad that you're back at work. We're very happy to have you here and not over there hanging up early or not participating. Like, we're happy to have you here, we need you, we need you to participate and follow the law. Compromise, do the things that you have said, Michael read that lengthy paper. And the very next day, I think his wife actually reached out and followed me on social media platforms, on my personal page. And on my business page, and then reached out to a friend and asked me to remove some things, I would prefer to talk to you. This isn't, you know what I mean, like this is just a lot of extracurricular BS, so I am hopeful that we can put this all behind us. And that we could come to something that is reasonable, I think that we self-regulated ourselves very well. We were respectful of our neighbors and of the nuisance, we understand. That there were issues, you were up at the booth's house doing sound testing many times, we saw it in your time sheets. Um you know, those devices weren't approved, we have approved equipment. Um but we do feel very hopeful that we could at least return to status quo. And that there will be the availability to allow the community something that it has begging you for. I think you've heard enough people telling you that it adds value and the reasons why we want it. And I understand you have to consider the betterment of everyone here, so we ask that you consider ours, you know, our request to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to turn the motion to your attorney. Motion to your attorney, Mr. Loveenheim. Your second.
I'll say.
Second, Mr. Robert, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.